...about the comment, the things that you hear about, the, uh, in, in the media, that the media picks up. I will say that, uh, our local media does pick up on a bit about what's really going on. But to, uh, to know the overall impact, it would be good for the county to, to share that. So if we can get that out, anything else to... All right, uh, so I'll move to the your part of the concern. For a little... I'll give it a second. All in favor? Aye, aye. All right, and now we, uh, to Mr. McIntyre in the room. There he is. Right. Come on forward, we'll, we'll have a presentation and we'll recognize you as right quick to give it to the community. And just a quick briefing.
Appreciate you brief brief. All right, good afternoon. Uh, Commissioner, I just think you could give me an opportunity to come and, uh, brief everybody on, um, the current actions that we're, uh, working under ahead of impacts from what is back to Tropical Storm Debbie. Um, Tropical Storm Debbie made landfall in Florida, um, earlier this early hours of this morning as a hurricane, a Cat 1 hurricane, and is slowly making its way, uh, across the state of Florida and going to head up our way. Um, one of the funny things I heard, or lack of funny things I heard by one of the meteorologists was the fact that, uh, it's going faster now than what it'll be going in the next coming days. Um, and it was moving at eight miles an hour at that point. That's the fastest that we'll see until it leaves here sometime later this week, over the weekend possibly. Um, that slow movement that they're forecasting and will likely occur is causing a lot of, um, trouble in forecasting and, and how we are planning for, for this event. Um, but I can tell you, um, with certainty, no matter what, how fast it goes through, how, what the impacts are, we will be prepared. We are planning for the worst, um, and hoping for the best. In the sense of our communications, we started our county conference calls among our internal and external partners across the county, including state and a couple of federal assets, uh, this morning. That call will, will occur every day, uh, for the diversion, the rest of this event. Um, we are working with our, um, internal partners, uh, including the school board, DSS, and HHS, and the sheriff's office to ensure that our shelter plan is in place. And that is in place, ready to go in the event that we need to open up shelters. Um, and the need for any of our other resources, all of our, uh, equipment is ready to go, uh, prepared and, uh, staged in the event that that comes, uh, to fruition. We are expecting and planning for excessive rain. They're calling for 12 to 18 inches of rain over this next week. Um, that's substantial. It's, it's not Florence rain, but that's substantial when we've already had, um, a large amount of rain over the last two weeks where the, the ground is already saturated and the water has nowhere to go. My other concern there is that, um, the fact that it's going to be a multiple day event, um, is our titles, tide cycles. The high tides are going to come in and push that water in, and it's not going to have anywhere else to go. So it's, uh, flooding is going to be an issue. Um, our partners at the, when the service realized that, they Our partners at the service realized that, they just placed us under a flash flood watch for the basically the balance of the week. The flooding potentially will be life threatening. So that is a major concern of ours, so we're working with our communications department to get our messages out to keep people informed and urging them that if they experience flooding during Florence or any other significant incident, that they need to plan accordingly, and that may be evacuating and going to stay with friends, family, taking a brief vacation, whatever it may be, just getting out of harm's way. And that's kind of where we're where we're heading with our planning on sheltering. Speaking of shelter, one of the major things that we have to get in place before we can activate our shelters is declaration. So I ask that you guys consider that in the near future, maybe as early as tomorrow. In case we have to, you know, make that call. We will, we're continuously in contact with National Weather Service and our local media and their weather components to ensure that we're got a really diversified thought process in our forecast tracks. And we even have our in-house subject matter expert in weather that we enjoy on a regular basis and we must, it's much appreciated, Commissioner Cook. So with that, we are, we are posed and standing by continuously monitoring, we are activated to a level three, which you're aware with the with our newest EOP, that puts us at enhanced monitoring. Emergency management staff, along with our partners are are fully engaged in monitoring the weather and making sure we're prepared. I do not foresee any activations of the EOC to a partial or a full in the next 24 to 36 hours, but that could change based on on forecasts, so we'll keep everybody apprised of that. And I'll open it up for questions.
Thank you, Mr. Trump. I would be willing to defer to the chairman for declaration. I think it would require necessarily a full vote of this board, we'll give you that now.
I don't think that it does.
It does, I just wanted to present that the need is, the need is there.
And I, and I do think that doing this by tomorrow night would probably be appropriate. So that folks can, yeah, that would be a headline that that certainly folks would eat the morning and if they haven't already, start their protective acts. And I did, I did opt-in before I came in here this afternoon, it's by the brochure storm. So the message is getting out that says, well, yeah, it's every checkout was full, so wow. So yes, and and they weren't all first, they're local. So, so yes, I think tomorrow morning probably need to do something like that.
Yes, we discussed this for the sake of people who are watching or in my audience here, can you kind of list that a little bit regarding what you anticipate maybe initiate regarding bridging up waves or where people, whatever. What's it, because a lot of people, we may even don't know, what do you think?
That's, that's a great question. You know, our population is, you know, as mentioned in several of our speakers, our population's grown tremendously. And I was speaking with somebody earlier today, referenced the fact we have two groups in our population, we have those that have experienced it and those that have not. And, you know, educating and getting that information out to the ones that don't know what to expect and to remind the others is is paramount. So our, our message there is turn around, don't drown. It's, I mean, if water is crossing the water, the highway and you're uncertain, turn around, don't, don't test it. One of our partners, if you've seen Steve Pats with the Weather Services presentation that he always does, he's got a great picture, it's imposed water over the roadway, it looks like it may be only inches, inches deep, take water away and it's 15 feet deep because it washed out the toll road. And that's a strong possibility, not only if it, if it doesn't wash the roadway, it could dramatically weaken the structure of that roadway and cause, you know, drivability issues and a safety concern. We would work with DOT, you know, they've got signs out where historically high water is present on their highways, take heed of that. There's a reason those signs are there because there's been high water there and there, there's going to be high water there again. So messaging that to the, to the community, making sure that they understand that, you know, we're in a low line typically for the most part, flat part of the state, water is going to extend out, it's going to get deep in those, in those rivers and pretty stuff that are already, some of them are already at capacity or nearing capacity. Some of the warnings that we're seeing in the flood models are the Waukamaw Basin and the river itself will exceed its, go into in the flood stage pretty easily, pretty quickly, as well as the Cape Fear and those pieces that directly affect our community and reminding the community that back during Florence, the county was split up into multiple islands and it makes it hard for us to access, you know, we, we had to bring out some pretty pretty significant resources in the form of high water vehicles and boats and helicopters to get resources around. And that's not real easy and it's not, you know, not, you know, sometimes it's, you know, for lack of better, better terms troublesome, you know, because of access to those. But we will make sure that our resources are staged and ready to go and we'll, we'll, you know, stop it. Nothing to make sure that the public's safe and the resources are distributed and those in harm's way are taken out, taken out of that.
So, so how you brought that about the U.S., about the US, the warways with Waukamaw speculating, has applied it again. Is it possible to touch base back to the state and see if he could give you a snapshot of where, where the Waukamaw was and what stage it was at during our last storm that we had? And then give us an idea of what's going to happen to the Waukamaw this time with the extreme projections that they had. That way, if anybody, if we did experience flooding in some of those southern neighborhoods and it were the sad, a certain level last time that we got a good proportion of rain, this time we're looking at getting an increase possibly in that. And if the flood stage is even, has increased in Waukamaw, then this might be, it might be a good planning idea for us to look at for some of the areas. And then if that, if that is the case, and he comes back with that pitch, I would say you allow your communications staff, you must give the messages out to those communities, do the same thing for the Cape Fear as well. And I, I think it would be something that, you know, he's probably got the extra staff already in to that they could probably do that for you and that way we would have a little bit more planning to looking at the past and looking at what the projections are for today, so.
We've got a whole division that does something.
Couple of things, first of all, thank you for all the work you've, I know you, you and our communications staff have already done. One message I think would be important to get out, just looking back at Florence, I haven't flashbacks to Florence much on this thing. If someone goes to a shelter, they need to be prepared to stay there for quite a few days. We have people in our shelters in Florence for much longer than they anticipated because they could not get home because the flood waters are still between them and their house. And they planned to be there one or two days and they were there four or five days ago. And I would encourage people, if they can find somewhere else to shelter with family besides wanting to go to a shelter, they're going to be more comfortable if they go out of the area and make those plans now. Because we have people who were not happy with the condition of the shelter, but it, it was struggling to keep the power on there because the generator was running out of gas, but hopefully we work around that, so that's one thing I would certainly mention. You already mentioned turn around, don't drown, I think, I saw some, I watched someone on Highway 133 pull up in a jeep at the barricade, get out and look at it, drive right through water that probably went up to the level of where their feet were. And for all, like you said, for all they need, that road's gone. And I would expect them to come out of the other side with an alligator in their feet, but that, that. One thing that the gentleman in the Weather Service mentioned in our briefing a year ago, I think at the hurricane conferences, he used a term I'd never heard, fake weather, we have all heard of fake news. And just to encourage people to use official sites to get their information. I've seen people I know sharing sites, sharing posts from clickbait sites that'll take the one worst case scenario. They become accurate, but it's not what the official projection is. And they share that and everybody else hears it and assumes this information, so I think the more we can get people to go to our county information sites and National Weather Service to get their information. And especially if people evacuate out of the area and are looking to come home, do not allow Facebook or Nextdoor to go at the roads, go to an official source because that road may not be open for them to get home. One question I do have is what plans for, how are we going about communicating with people who may not be connected digitally, people in various less fortunate areas that may not have broadband access, do we have Raptor's ability to get word to them?
Yes, sir, we, we work in with our co-add partners, with, you know, Leslie Stanley, with our, with our department. That's her, that's her bread and butter, so she's reaching out and making sure that those messages are going out and we're reaching those that that may, you know, be on the other side of the digital divide, you know. But that's also another great opportunity to share that we are reaching out to our access and personal needs list to ensure that those that, if they need to go to a shelter or want to go to the shelter, they, they have a threat in their home, you know, either energy dependent or they're in a low line area or less than, you know, great conditions that we're, we're reaching out to them and making those, those connections to bring them to a, to a better place so that they're safe during the event.
I have two other thoughts. One thing, you know, our sheriff's sitting at the back of the room and I know people love to ride around looking at storm damage. You can see it all on his Facebook page, so please use his Facebook page if you want to see what's going on, they post. They have deputies driving around who are trained for this and they will post pictures of why you should stay home. Another thing, and this is again something from Florence, is as protracted as this event looks like it could be, running for five days, you may be getting calls from people wanting to volunteer and donate while you're still busy trying to manage the operation, so who do they call so that they don't bother you down and keep you from being able to do your job?
They can, people that want to come in and volunteer their services or even want to donate resources to, you know, help the cause, they, there's a couple of different ways they can reach out straight to the charities that are, are mentioned in various websites. And but they, more, more so they can reach out to, to our department and we'll connect them with Leslie Stanley again and she'll, she'll point them in the right, most appropriate direction that they can.
And that's what I want to encourage is to have one point of contact if possible, because we have people trying to donate things we did not need and then not donating what we did need and things show up and people say, why are any use of this, well, we didn't need it, we needed this. And people trying to volunteer, we want to make sure we plug them into the right place where they can actually make a difference.
Yes, sir.
Not just have them occupied space. Thank you for all your work.
I just want to say that a lot of people really don't know what's going on behind the scenes, I mean, my, my staffer at the company said, I saw an airboat, it's had about 20 years. So between sheriff's office and your office, there's a lot of assets that people don't know, we can virtually just get anywhere. I mean, between swamp boat, halfway, that, the surf, yeah, between that, the helicopters, the airboat, patrol boats, everything, everything is visible because we try to make sure there is no place that you can't see, reach. We've got hyperclimbed, uh, vehicles stashed all over the place, very strong and robust response, people think, oh, this is a rural area, they don't see it. They don't see it by design. But even like North Carolina, North Carolina's got two hospitals, there are 96 bed hospitals from the emergency group, the board, the operating rooms, everything else to be deployed in the afternoon, we've got two of them that can do that, they're in the state, the unit's got that. We've got a large radio system in the world, over 180,000 people use the bio radio system. Now that we do virtually, we've got, you know, web to see. On that, we've also got backup radio communications systems, we've got, we're nice to play, so. I mean, at every single level, there's redundancy, people just don't know it, it's there. But, you know, you guys did an outstanding job, drill for it, prepare for it, law enforcement does it, sheriff's sitting back there, everybody in five, four, three, and they go wide arms. So thank you for what you're doing and thank you for everybody else that's associated with it.
Thank you. I will, I will say that Brunswick County Sheriff's Office is probably our biggest, our largest partner, especially on the preparedness side, to ensure that our resources are, are staged and ready to go. They, you know, all I do is make a phone call and they're, they're in, in place, so that's much appreciated, Commissioner.
Yes, I'm going to direct this actually at rest. If you could, let me put out in your publications this week, stay home. If you don't need to be out, if it's not an emergency, please just stay home. We know roads are going to flood, we know rivers are going to press. If you don't have to absolutely be out there, please just stay home. And, and again, turn around, don't drown, let's, let's get the rest of jobs, the 160,000 people. Just stay home if at all possible, it would help, the sheriff doesn't need to be running around pulling people out of outstanding water or, or anything. But for emergency management people, we have too many other things going on, please just stay home.
Just to piggyback on that, if somebody makes a, a bad choice and goes out when they don't need to and drives through that running water, they could put a deputy, they could put EMS person in danger who has to come rescue them from what was really not a smart decision.
Well, they spent a week, we're in Florida, a week on the Dagobah airboat getting people out of their houses, when we told them to leave, they wouldn't leave. When we tell them to stay, we mean for them to stay, we don't play, we're telling them what we need to do. Half of the deaths, I think, associated with storms are curable. Individuals that drove in the flooded roadways thinking they can get through it because somebody else just did it or whatever, half of them died that way. So, yeah, turn around.
The majority of the deaths related tropical systems relate either directly or indirectly back to water. One way or another, it, it's back to water and we're going to have a lot of, so.
We're about to, uh, off-line.
All right, so, so while that's been gloom, let's talk about something very positive. The last week on July 30th, Brunswick County and our partners, both, you know, all the way from local, state and federal agencies, including New Hanover County, State of North Carolina, the Department of Nuclear Protection, FEMA, et cetera, the, the list is pretty lengthy. Participated in the 2024 FEMA graded hostile action-based exercise based out of the Brunswick Nuclear Plant. It's something that we have to exercise, there's an eight, eight-year cycle. This year, every two years, we have a graded full-scale exercise where resources are deployed. This particular one was targeted around a hostile action that affected Duke's nuclear power plant. No fault to Duke or any of, any of those partners, it was just a hostile action. And this particular deal involved an aviation event where a large cargo plane affected the site. With that, we ran through the entire scenario based on sheriff's office, doing law enforcement activities, securing the site, making sure there was no additional threats. Fire department partners from across the, the emergency preparedness zone, 10-mile zone down South Port, BSL, et cetera. Participant, you know, they were targeting on decision-making and actions related to putting the fire out. EMS was treating patients, emergency management coordinating that, helping coordinate that effort and fully supporting it based on our radiological plans, emergency preparedness plans. That exercise went through, started about eight o'clock, we wrapped up just about two o'clock, I believe, on that Tuesday afternoon. Friday, this past Friday, we went and had a meeting with FEMA and got our preliminary results. Preliminary results was. Preliminary results was that mission accomplished. That was a quote, mission accomplished. Um. We went through no major findings, no no findings at all. Number one, number two, that's good for us. And notice that our plan and our communication means are solid for Duke. That means that they they can sleep well knowing that their. Public safety and support folks across all agencies are ready to respond. Uh one of the big things that was relayed to us from the FEMA four FEMA uh rep out of Area Four out of Atlanta. That addresses the rep program. He says, it is great to see North Carolina Emergency Management. And its county agencies bringing back the rep program that it that of the past. And we are making leaps and bounds. I will add that we did uh establish a best practice during this particular event, working with our partners with Verizon. And not leaving any of our other AT&T or any others. No prep, no, no special treatment to any one. But in this particular one, due to, they offered up some uh service, so we integrated them into the exercise to provide expanded broadband. Uh strength, yeah, you know, because if this was a true event, everybody on their cell phone, it's hard to get calls out. So they came in and set up their system um in addition to other systems that we have uh that were set up. And FEMA and the evaluators recommend that to be a best practice from here on out. So that was, that was another very good positive that came out of this. The after-action, the draft after-action. Should be out to us this week, hopefully. Um they're waiting on a part, the initial approval from the higher-ups at FEMA before they send it to us and then we'll have an an a period to. Um, you know, basically say yea or nay, we agree. Uh and then the final will come out no later than the end of October. So we'll, we should see those two documents in a very short, short time frame. So um excellent exercise. Um gives a chance to practice some stuff and it all worked out a hundred percent in our favor. So um and. To the community's favor as well. A lot of people are concerned about the plant. Um but they can be rest assured that Brunswick County and our partners are ready to respond to that plant if need.
Yeah, I'll I'll share this with you. You know, and this is kind of someone that's been been in the emergency bank for. It's community for almost four years now. Uh the reason why North Carolina is so sharp in our abilities to respond is because of the nuclear plants within our state. The, you know, it is the only group where you have a mandatory requirement. That your off-site responders have to respond in a certain manner. And uniformly across the board, you know, Brunswick County, Fairs, Wake County, and Charlotte Med. Comes to nuclear facilities and the ability to coordinate a response were were very important in that regard. But uh it's not, it's it's not the heritage planning and the heritage exercises. That's gotten us in North Carolina to to be able to handle any type of emergency. It's those nuclear plants that require the ability of off-site responders to respond in a certain manner for them to be able to operate. And uh so a lot goes, and we can talk all day about nuclear plants and and the the good and the bad. Uh but in quite honestly, North Carolina is in a good response group compared to most off-states. Primarily because of those nuclear plants and exercising that has to go on with it. I think y'all did a great job and I think communications is a huge piece of that. And so I think uh I think y'all, y'all did very well.
I I will add, like I had one thing, sheriff's back in the back and I want to make sure he hears this. I haven't had a chance to talk to him about it yet. Um the evaluators and the FEMA team um also made notes about the incident command post. Sheriff's Office um took lead on our incident command post because of this solid event. Um and that that was located at a at a one of our uh facilities. Here in the county away from the the plant itself where it was a safe, controlled environment. The actions that were taken by the incident command team made up primarily of the sheriff's office. Our fire department personnel from uh Southport. Um and EMS and a couple of other partners um was, quote, one of the best they've ever seen. So I wanted to share that.
Yeah.
So um good things. So, thank you.
Super. Thank you. Very glad to have you today and glad. All right. So uh moving right on, I think we're gonna recognize uh McDaniel Andrew. We've got certificate of excellence.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. Uh you know, as you all know, that I'm forever singing the praises of our director of fiscal operations here, who's spent that his entire finance team. Uh there are others that have lots of nice things to say about them too. Uh they have, again, received the government's. Government Finance Officers Association Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting. And the distinguished budget presentation award. This is the twenty-third year that they have received the excellence in financial reporting. And the eighteenth year they have received the distinguished budget presentation award. When it goes to the burger this year, for the first time, the county receives special recognition for our capital burger as part of the distinguished budget presentation. Special recognition is given when all three of your viewers give it the highest possible score in the category. Brunswick County was only one of twenty-four entities nationwide to be so recognized. The only county recognized and the only entity in North Carolina to receive this recognition. Uh so again, I think Eric and his entire team were to be commended for these consistent, very high efforts on our financial reporting. And our budget presentation. And I think they'll all come forward and they can present one with flags.
Well, I have one question. Are the eighteen and twenty-three consecutive? That's a great question.
That's amazing.
That's amazing.
Yeah, not only the uh all the finance staff come board. We're gonna come down and.
Uh walks down, wants to say real quick that um this are some good samples because they work with the D and M. Uh they're all in the league, um practice, uh collaboration that actively improves our county processes. Um and it's easy to have sanctuary that you and the public uh receives.
Congratulations.
Yeah, thank you.
Oh, congratulations. Thank you.
Yeah.
Yes, absolutely.
Uh I'm I'm very thankful and proud of this team and we're all grateful for the support we get from the management and uh from other fiscal operations in the county too. So uh thank you guys.
Well, so uh we're gonna move to community faces. Could you claim that?
Good afternoon. Megan Cissack, Brunswick County Communications Director. So today we're going to be presenting our recommendation for a strategic planning dashboard for the county to pursue. Looking back the ways when we were talking about our fiscal year twenty twenty-five goals tied to our strategic plan. One of the things that came up from both county management and the county commissioners was that we wanted a way to have a more transparent and regular means. Of showing how the county is doing concerning our key performance indicators and those tactics that the departments have tied to your. Goals and objectives in the strategic plan. So over the last few months, we've had a core group of team members from county management, communications, finance, and the information technology department. That have gone and looked at a number of strategic planning online dashboards that particularly focus on local government agencies. And we have uh we have looked at several of them and our recommendation is to move forward with a product called Invisio. And we have looked at a number of different areas with, when we were looking at these dashboards and I'll kind of go over why we. Felt like Invisio was the best option. Um one of the core areas that we looked at. That was kind of the first one was functionality and the ease of use for staff and the public to use the dashboard. We wanted to make sure that the people that would be viewing the dashboard on the front end uh will be able to understand what they were seeing. It'd be easy to navigate. We also wanted to make sure that it'd be something easy for our staff to use. Um we know that they're busy. They have a lot on their plate. They already have a lot going on. They're trying to track maybe another means. So we wanted to make sure it'd be a really easy and simple way for them to get reminders about how to to put their information in. And then it would just be navigable on the back end. Um I do have a few um different options that we could look at too of some other agencies. I know it's black out there on the screen. Um, yeah, we'll go ahead and just pop one up real real quick. Um so this is the city of Denton, Texas. I actually got to speak with the the staff person that operates this Invisio platform. And the ones that I, the the folks from other agencies that I've spoken with have said that this is a five out of five. When uh looking at the ease of actually using it from the staff end. And you can see that for the public on this particular dashboard, it's really colorful. It's bright. You can put photos of different elements in there to help show. Showcase your community. Um you, we would have our five goals. We have six here and ten, but you can see that they. Title our different key performance indicators there that they can show over time. And there is a bar at the top where you can see it says about fifty-nine percent. That is showing like overall all the tactics that they have under that. They're showing kind of the status of those. Green is like on track. Yellow is maybe a pause in progress, red maybe like not started or not underway. Um but if you scroll down, you can kind of see some of the different. Objectives and tactics that they have there and you can click on those and kind of go as deep as you want to. All these agencies use that, use this a little bit differently. So that's something that we would figure out how we want to use it, whether we want KPIs to be featured more or you can even have. Just more general description for different KPIs. But it does require um a little bit more of a status update more regularly. Right now with the way that Brunswick County tracks, every department probably tracks things differently within their own department, but for the public side, we really just showcase it. On an annual basis in our budget. So this is an opportunity where we can work with the departments and identify. We want more month, we want monthly uh reports and updates on certain key performance indicators or quarterly updates. How often do we want a progress report to be updated into the system and and kind of work with with them to that. So that's one example. Um from Denton, Texas. Um this is the city of Irving. Um again, everyone, you can kind of pick and choose how you how you design it. But it's pretty user friendly from what we've heard from the other organizations that are using Invisio currently. That's one that has a lot of the key performance indicators that they've. Kind of showcased there. Invisio also, what you're looking at right now is a public dashboard. Um Invisio with the subscription proposal that we're looking at. They give us unlimited public and internal dashboards, unlimited reports. Um which you can actually pick and choose which ones you want and schedule out reports routinely. So if you wanted. A report, we could schedule that for you for the tactics and the KPIs that you'd be interested in specifically. Um gives us unlimited users, so we could have as many or as few staff people as we want. It doesn't affect the cost. Um so that gives us a good way that we can kind of. Figure out how we want to assign different roles for staff people and then um. Get get them kind of in board and they maybe have different um different abilities to uh to edit based on their user level. Another important feature of this Invisio platform is because you have all those different unlimited plans and dashboards. Is it is really simple to just add a key tactic or whatnot and then apply it across multiple plans or dashboards and only have to input it once. So it keeps things very simple. Um and you wouldn't have to duplicate work across different reports. This is also one from Washington County, Oregon. And again, this is just an example. You can use these dashboards for a number of different things. We've been looking at strategic plan, but they also are using it for. An ARBA framework so that they can show how they're using those funds and people can go. Look and see how the funds have been allocated and what different projects are going on. Another key aspect that we thought about as we were going along was, of course, we were thinking about the transparency aspect for the public, but. Also using it as a management tool for our directors and the county management team. And there is a way that you can actually trap and assign progress on projects within the system. Again, departments can create internal reports or internal dashboards so that they can be tracking and managing their their progress too. And asking their staff to use it. So there's a lot of different ways that we can use this. This tool and there's a lot of different ways that you can display information or choose to uh organize information through it. And of course, customer service and support is a huge one and. There is, um I've heard nothing but the things from the other clients that are using Invisio. They said that they have been very responsive. That throughout the whole training process, they actually give training sessions for our staff so that they get. Their feet wet, they see how to how to use it and and whatnot. They have a lot of different resources that like uh. Like video explainers and whatnot and they have a good cus, a good customer support and we uh system and we would also get our own cus. Cus uh customer support representative even after the initial um training and launch those those live. We're also recommending Invisio because um not only does it meet a lot of these four areas, um the pricing was also um the best fit for us. Um we had budgeted around thirty thousand dollars and anticipating uh this project. Um we are having a recommended budget allocation and that's really just to cover the one-time initiation fee pretty much. Um but other than that, um we feel like this is the best, the best bank for our buck and the best system for both our staff and our public. But I'm welcome, I welcome your questions or if we want to kind of look through it. This is actually one that they kind of built on the fly for us. But just to give you a sense of kind of what you can do or what it would look like with our details in there. Um so I think even if you look on, again, some of this data might be um. For play, but it it's kind of to show you the different ways that you can showcase the information. And some of this is data that we have pulled from some of our departments.
It's, I think you've already answered this, but it's pretty easy to customize the metrics you use from one department to the next.
Mm-hmm.
So we will be able to maybe do all of our, like our veteran services response time to begin their package via this.
Absolutely. In fact, in that way, you, she, veteran services could just plunder information in there and then they could schedule, hey, on the first of every month. We want this report to go out to the county management team and the county commissioners and and it can be automated through the system. That's how. That's how easy it is. Um you can also, like, again, you can create a report. I think the other, the next tab over. Actually, this was included in the packet. This is just like an example of a of a progress report that they can email out. This has a billion things in there. But you could pick and choose which tactics you specifically want and it can let you know. We on track or behind schedule or anything and have like a reason why or a status update on certain things.
Then actually, can you stop right there on customer service? Because that was my next question.
Mm-hmm.
What kind of customer service metrics does it track and how does that data go in? Is that something we've? What kind of customer service metrics does it track? And how does that data get put in? Is that something we've obviously talked about in prior meetings was the ability to monitor and measure, you know, if a person calls the county and they talk to this person and then get bounced over here and eventually end up over here. How long does it take? That type of thing. Is this something that this help measure?
That is absolutely something that this can help measure. I think that part of this process, again, we're going to look at what the, the department staff already have that they already use in their annual goal sheets, but we're really going to talk through this too. And we're going to talk about, hey, we don't want just output number, number of reports I push out every day or number of call. And we also want maybe what was the average response time to return that phone call? We're really going to talk through those things and figure out what's a manageable expectation for those kinds of statistics and then help them plug that in. And then what will happen is we'll figure out what's the frequency of getting those updates, what's manageable, what's realistic, what would be helpful to the public and to you all, and then schedule reminders out and they'll get reminders through like email and Microsoft Teams saying, hey, your, your progress report is due, like come click here to go fill it in by this date.
And, and the next question is, is there any ability for this to integrate the tools that are already used and so the data is automatically put in?
There, there are poss, there are things that they might be able to, uh, save like APIs with. So that's something that we'll discuss, uh, as we go. But there are, there are some capabilities.
Sure. She's been on a bit of a beginning full when it comes to computers and what's that? This seems so, he was a criminal.
Good.
I, I like it. I, I like the brightness a lot. I mean, it's kind of eye catching, but the ease of view seem, uh, I'm all for it.
Fantastic.
Yeah. Each one of us individually and somewhat collectively, we will collaborate, I guess, through sharing graphics and numbers and stats and stuff like that. We get the CACC or we get it for the budget process or we get it somehow we come up with those. Well, some of that information other than what we've already seen, we either like, we know, like I was on a meeting two, three weeks ago, I'm talking about broadband and access and I was, I don't remember the video, but I had the numbers of it was a high percentage, like eighty-five or more better percentage had broadband and had computers at home. And that's what they, so they, I said, well, we already got eighty-five percent, you know, and they go, well, but yeah. It builds up that stuff. That can be embedded in this kind of thing where people start seeing, okay, this is our demographics. This is the age bracket. This is the number of people in public schools. This is some people that are, all these other kind of, these are the most, more or less in-house type thing now. We run the operation currently.
We would have to plug that information in, but we certainly can't. Like the way that there's other sources of information like census data and whatnot. Those are things that we can put in there and you can use that as maybe we have a population figure or like your example with the number of, uh, residents that have access to, to broadband or like, you know, rural.
We use it, we use it all the time because people ask us that they, they, they may or may not know that they'll sit there and go, but I thought that, you know, whatever, you know, yeah, this is exactly what's going on in there. Really? But we have to sit there, take notes orally and then put it into a database somewhere. And then you've got to be in nowhere to pull it from. And this would be a, a simple, and I guess, you know, it's almost like, you know, everybody's giving blood out of arms and legs and it's additional. But what is also, what about an app perspective? And we looked into maybe this, uh, an app versus having to get on the web. Cause I know, so we can get online. Yeah, I know you can, but they're going to swallow this balance. I'm sorry, we have apps. If we all about doing that, it's fast growing the way we are.
That isn't something that's come up in our discussions with Invisio, but I certainly can ask if there's app capabilities. Uh, and I would say too, I mean, even some of these things, you can pick and choose which ones you want and you can embed them on webpages and stuff like that. I know that's still online website, but I'll ask about the app option and see if that's something that they.
They don't lie because some of the social media stuff gives that, I'm on this one. It is almost like we've gone from, you know, ABC, NBC, CBS to now there's five hundred channels. And it's like hard to be able to keep up with all of the platforms that are out there. And if you have an app, that's a set of, we control, we go back to versus having to post it out there on someone's app. Whatever. And so that's my, my idea is I'm saying if we have an app, I think that would be a viable thing.
I'll ask what their capabilities are, but again, yeah, you, we can pick and choose. Those are things that we'll have discussions with, but like there are, there's so many different key performance indicators out there that are not necessarily things that are just in-house that we can use to track, track and see if we're making progress. Or, you know, is there a correlation between our efforts here and an improvement in a metric here? One more thing I was, oh, did you have a question? One more thing I'd like to note as part of our subscription package, um, the next couple of tabs over are examples of what's called the project module. And there's even a map feature that I don't have shown up here, but it, there's actually a way that we could, we could input, um, our capital improvement projects or, or certain projects that we're working on and, and then pass staffs and the input. You can track how the budget is going. You can track the progress of the, the project. So again, these are kind of for fun play ones, but they are real projects, obviously. But, uh, you can, we can get updates there. And then the map feature is actually really cool because people can see where all these different projects are happening across the county and then like click on one and then they can get the kind of the nuts and bolts of how that project's going. Whether, even if it's like on the horizon, we can, you know, we'll have these conversations, but I think sometimes people don't realize all the different capital projects that are planned on the horizon in, in the CIP. So it's a way to show people that we are planning ahead, that we do have some things.
One other thing I'm ready to ask, I want to know if this is possible of seeing how you have a lot narrative here. Sometimes like in this very case, right here, you know, the, the walk of law building, we were holding off on that because we thought it's like money and we found out some costs that's been in the more. Sometimes there's a rationale outside why the money is spent, the way it's spent because people don't understand it. They think we cut it, but didn't some of them did it where they think that we did this and maybe, you know, whatever. Is there a rationale that's sometimes embedded in the narrative that says this was originally going to be in this, but we reduced it to this because we're going to do such and such. I mean, we, we didn't talk about that up here. Was that ever considered to be put in here so that in six months we asked somebody, I asked, well, I thought they were going to spend, I thought they were going to spend six million dollars on that building and now they're going to spend whatever they're spending. But again, because we, we actually drive it. Is that ever considered in the narrative?
So I think there's probably a few ways, like, well, obviously we have like the updates and whatnot where you can add things and then they can kind of trickle. They can say, you know, add up, but those are certainly, I can kind of double check and see what other features. I think if you scroll up a little bit.
Well, you would also have it as needed because if you find the public starts asking questions, like then.
Yeah, absolutely. And even like we have a project description. So there was, those are areas where you can even add some of that context. That way if people, if we want to kind of explain the reason now or rationale, I mean, the Northwest one is a great example because there was a lot of planning and you did a pilot program for that project. And so that's all explained kind of in the key details why we made that decision and, um, and, and kind of to just give people a, even some information about why the project exists. People know why that one exists, but they might not understand maybe like the Ashwell law or they might not understand why, you know, a wastewater treatment plant, why that might be important. Put some context there. So certainly, um, well, I'll ask a little more and get a little bit more of the functionality, but I think this is a, a helpful tool just so we can kind of visualize a lot of these projects that we have going on a little bit more in one central location. Again, okay. Any other questions or, or thoughts?
I will approve of the requested appropriation and the, um, execution of the agreements of, so to the attorney's review.
All right. So move into the second on further discussion and then I'll figure out.
Thank you.
All right. So then maybe when you think this will be up to you, it's about six months, a year, you know, regardless.
You know, we, we've had some of those conversations ourselves and we'll get the agreement up and running. It probably takes about eight to 10 weeks for the training to all get simulated and kind of get us, uh, kind of build us out. I think we have talked about maybe doing kind of a phased approach and like taking our time, but kind of mirroring as we go into the FY twenty-six budget process, working with departments to build their department areas and then sink it into a strategic plan framework. So it's definitely going to be something we're working at. Maybe we start off with it more internal and then make it, uh, more public as we go along. But, um, we're definitely, uh, going to be working on it a lot. Thank you.
Very good. All right. So we'll move to, uh, health services and, uh, perhaps community education. We have some health services out here.
Mr. Chair, I would ask that the health, community educators come up to introduce themselves. How long will it take for them?
Introduce yourselves.
Sure.
Travis, I'm a health educator too, and, uh, I'm a health educator.
I'm Olivia Jarvis. I'm a health educator one.
Hi, I'm Rachel Crowder, also health educator.
Come on this side of this panel, okay? Until we get to our next item, we'll be changing that. First of all, thank you. I lost a niece and nephew in the last seven years due to drug overdoses. I have lost more friends. I was in the rock and roll business quite a while and I lost a lot of friends in my life. I cannot tell you how much I personally appreciate what you do. But I'm going to read this proclamation and then present it to you. Proclamation designating August, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, International Overdose Awareness Day in Brunswick County, North Carolina. Whereas drug overdose claimed the lives of fifty-eight Brunswick County residents in two thousand twenty-three. And we must do all we can do to reduce the toll of overdose in our community. And whereas the people affected by drug overdose are our sons, daughters, mothers, fathers, brothers, sisters, and deserving of our compassion and support. And whereas Brunswick, Brunswick County acknowledges the harm and hardship caused by drug overdose. And whereas Brunswick County acknowledges the power of a united community with the shared goal of preventing and ultimately ending drug overdoses. Now, therefore, Randy Thompson, Chairman of the Brunswick County Board of Commissions, and on behalf of the Brunswick County Board of Commissions, do hereby proclaim that Saturday, August thirty-first, twenty twenty-four, will be recognized as International Overdose Awareness Day in Brunswick County with the theme of Together We Can. All community members are called upon to unite in memory of loved ones we have lost and to draw upon the strength found in unity, which we can utilize to end drug overdose in Brunswick County. Dated this fifth day of August, twenty twenty. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Congratulations and congratulations. You're in the. Uh, if you guys want to come that room or just stand up there.
We can have. One, two, three.
If you want to increase this.
Thank you, baby. You so much.
Thank you. Appreciate it. Thank you.
If you're more aware of what they've just stated, this has been a war. And I think that through a lot of effort by a lot of people, a lot of nonprofits, a lot of church groups and a lot of things going on in the county, a lot of people working with the county, the inmates, law enforcement, everything. The anger mission, the justice, the DA's office, I mean, all the way through the entire castle. We were the number one debt rate in the state of North Carolina with respect to drug overdose offenses. And we brought that down by down the median aspect. It's been for a lot of different work, hard work. It's been a weird. We all have perfectly seen good friends of ours in Walton. And we know what it's like. We also know the hope is bright. We also know definitely how people's lives can change for the better. And, uh, so we all have had that. And so yes, this is not just a certificate, but this was really a great deal of appreciation for that part of it. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, we're also in, on August the thirty-first, several of the tree planning staff is going to be part of providing everyone to come out of their life at day nine PM. Everybody on the track.
Near the track. All right. So mid right on, uh, information that now be going down.
Good afternoon.
That's a handful.
I do, I do. I have a lot of information to share with you all day. So. Just one second. Sending you an information technology director and, um, excited to be here to present to you, um, our recommended AV solution for these chambers. Our staff has been diligently working for quite some time on this, but we are confident that, um, the solution we present today provides all the requirements the county was seeking, as well as placing the county on a solid audio video platform that will serve us well for the next ten to fifteen years. I'd like to briefly provide you with the background on how we landed here today. Our IT team developed, uh, the RFP and worked with county legal to finalize it. Andy Byron and I then reviewed the RFP with the county management team and we incorporated their additional request and released it following county protocol. Part of the RFP requirements included a mandatory walkthrough with all vendors who were interested in responding. Our IT team provided an overview of system requirements, answered questions of the vendors present, and all those attending submitted proposals in response to the RFP. Prior to those submissions, questions were received from several of the interested vendors and our IT team responded as required by the RFP. When proposals were received, our evaluation team got busy. Well, actually we got busier. Our team members, I'd like to introduce you to them. I had to come this afternoon. So, uh, Andy Byron, deputy IT, one of our IT deputy directors, Megan Casack, our communications director, Neil Valway, our senior IT server and communications administrator, and Alan Shears, our senior network engineer, um, and yours truly. So those were the evaluates or evaluators. And each member reviewed each proposal, evaluating against an established scoring metric based on criteria published in the RFP. Remote meetings were scheduled with each vendor and, uh, respective proposals were reviewed with our evaluation team. Once all questions had been answered, evaluation scores recorded and a selection was made. Andy and I then presented the recommended solution to the county management team. It was approved unanimously and the solution we presented to them is the one before you this afternoon. Under the direction of county manager Steve Stone, I prepared this presentation for you, have worked with the vendor and the county legal office to prepare an agreement for your consideration and approval. If approved as presented, I'll work with finance to prepare a purchase order. Once the vendor receives that with a copy of the fully executed agreement, the procurement process will begin progressing towards installation and implementation with an estimated completion of ten weeks. Once the vendor receives the PO. The vendor expects the chambers to be unavailable for approximately three weeks during the final stages of this project. With advanced planning, we'll be able to effectively relocate meetings that may be displaced during this three-week time period. The evaluation criteria, as I mentioned, um, our team arrived at our recommendation using the criteria noted here and it was included in the RFP. So the vendors were aware of ahead of time. Vendor qualifications were evaluated and that included consideration of the vendor's skills and experience related to system design and engineering for the type of system needed for Brunswick County. The system components were evaluated separately with our team examining the audio, video and control system for efficiency, flexibility, and the capability of fully complying with the scope of work identified in the RFP. Consideration was also given to the virtual meeting platforms and of course, the overall cost of the proposed solutions. Training, maintenance, and ongoing vendor support were also included in the evaluation. I'd like to note that we received five bids, um, with several of them coming from vendors in which Brunswick County has an established, solid and positive business relationship. Uh, while we appreciate their continued interest in the county, we value their support and service established relationship. In this scenario, given all things considered and evaluated, um, their proposals are. their proposals are not but recommended solution. I'll get to that in just a second. Several of the proposed options were provided with various features and functions included, and overall costs ranged from just over $195,000 up to $552,000. And while our recommended solution is not the proposal presented with the lowest price, we believe that the proposed system is a competitively priced, meets all county requirements, and will serve the county well for many years to come. Our recommended vendor is Abidex, and their proposed turnkey state-of-the-art solution is priced at $286,288. This system will improve the AV experience here in the chambers with the capability to extend and to be adjoining vestibule, and will provide those who choose to join us remotely with an experience that will appear to be a top-notch production. The same result will be provided for those who wish to review the meeting once it's been posted to the county's YouTube channel or other social media platforms. This turnkey solution is a fresh start for the county and will rid us of aged infrastructure, equipment, and legacy cabling that endured such things as the Florence flooding. The proposed outcome will provide us with reliable, a modern product, eliminating any question about who is responsible for what should something need repair or replacement. Most of the vendors responding to the RFP recommended replacement of existing infrastructure and equipment due to age and difficulty integrating with new technology. To share a little bit with you about the company itself. Abidex is a Fortune Global 500 corporation and ranked as one of the world's top AV and technology leaders. They have a presence throughout the US with multiple locations and are the seventh largest AV integrator in this country. Their CEO serves as Vice President of the PSNI Global Alliance, which is the Professional Systems Network International Alliance. It's the oldest and most widely recognized commercial AV technology network in North America. And over the next three years, they expect to expand into over 100 countries. Given the size of the company, their presence in the AV industry, and their established partnerships with leading technology firms, economies of scale come into play, and Abidex has positioned to offer us a complete state-of-the-art AV package at a competitive cost. Though the company has been in existence for over 17 years, their team of professionals working with and supporting Brunswick County have over 100 years of combined experience in the area of AV integration, as well as customer service, project management, and technical design. One of the goals of this effort is to create an easy-to-use, highly functional, reliable, efficient, effective, and integrated audiovisual solution for an exceptional unified AV experience. I also thought it was important to note their company core values are similar and align with those of the county, which should make for a successful partnership. Of their multiple locations in the US, one is based out of the Raleigh area, which is where a technician would be dispatched from should onsite support be needed. To take a look at the components, we'll start with audio. There'll be four speaker zones installed as part of this project. One on the left and one on the right side of the dais. One in the gallery area and one in the vestibule. For microphones, there'll be 13 18-inch goose neck microphones that will be installed at the dais and side tables. And each will have mute switches and LED indicators. So immediately, you'll be able to see if your mic is active or muted. One will be placed with the lectern for speakers and presenters. These microphones will not only provide for voice reinforcement and recording, but will also serve as points of reference for camera presets. A digital microphone array will be placed in the gallery and will eliminate feedback and the need for handheld microphones in this area. Lavender microphones will be available. Yes, sir?
What's a lavaville?
So.
Flip-on one.
Thank you. Yes, sir. Lavender flip-on microphone. Will be available should they be needed. The listen system is also included. This is a wireless assisted listening system with transmitters and receivers to improve the experience for a person who is hard of hearing, sending the audio directly to the headphones, hearing aids, or cochlear implants without amplifying ambient noise. This will meet ADA compliance, and proper signage will also be included. There'll be a headphone jack at the clerk's seating area for audience, and a digital audio out for connecting to the existing audio recording system for the record, which is used for recording in the Board of Commissioners' meetings and the Planning Board meetings. A digital audio jack for external connection by the press is also included.
Let me say goose neck, that said maybe. This will replace the multiple items you have.
Yes, sir. For video components, a 135-inch direct view LED video wall will provide an improved visual experience for the audience, for those who are in person, as well as those joining remotely. There will be three 70-inch display screens, two in the gallery and one in the vestibule. These will be wall-mounted and will provide proper visual acuity for those present in the gallery and the vestibule. 13 19.5-inch monitors with pinch zoom capability will be mounted on the dais, so they will be low and not obstruct the view of those seated at the front or side tables. Each monitor will be controlled by the individual seated in front of them. So if you choose to zoom in on something that's on your monitor, it will not impact or impede your neighbors or others viewing that same material. It also will not interfere with what's being seen by those in the audience in person or remotely. A laser projector and 110-inch high-definition tension projector screen are included for redundancy and failover. The room will have an automated camera system with four cameras. One camera will be mounted on the wall behind the dais and will focus on the presenter at the lectern. One camera will be a wide angle camera, but ceiling-mounted, and will show all people seated at the dais and the side tables. There will be two pan tilt zoom cameras that also will be ceiling-mounted, flanking the dais to the right and left sides. These cameras will be set up to follow audio. So when someone speaks into their respective microphone, the proper camera will focus on them. There will be some delays built into the system so that when sidebar conversations may occur at the dais, the image will remain on the full view. You're chuckling. Let me tell you a little bit more about this. The 135-inch direct view LED video wall. This photo was provided to us by the vendor and displays two of those displays on location with one of their current customers. The direct view LED displays eliminate the LCD panel. Instead, using a surface array of LEDs as the actual display pixels. This allows for incredible contrast, vibrant colors, and brightness levels several times that of LCDs. The LEDs directly light the display without the need for a filter. Direct view LED panels are lighter, they last longer, and emit less heat than LCD panels. There are no lines on the image of the video wall as it is seamless. So content can be created without the concern that text or other imported imagery will be obscured by the seam of the video wall. Another point to make is that the video wall will be comprised of two-by-two panels. So if one goes out, the entire screen does not stop working. Panels can be easily interchanged and will be kept on location in the event they are needed. We'll have 10 spare panels to pull from if and when needed. Direct view LED options minimize visual distractions. The non-glare panels will provide better visibility regardless of the ambient light. And they're developed for long-term quality and performance. And as mentioned before, the lifespan is expected to be 15 years and perhaps longer. This next photo, to demonstrate the size of the proposed direct view LED video wall, these two photos were taken in this room just a few days ago. I promise you that no IT personnel were harmed in the taking of these pictures. Okay. So to demonstrate the size of the proposed direct LED video wall, the flagpoles represent the outside boundaries of the proposed video wall. The gold outline provides a visual of the estimated size. As you can see, it's larger than the screen currently being used. And with the two mounted 70-inch displays in the gallery, the audience will experience proper visual acuity and be able to see what's being projected much more clearly than our current setup. A centralized controlled processor will communicate with all the systems in the room, including the network power distribution units in the equipment rack. The equipment rack will actually be stored in the back room adjacent to this area. The entire system can be monitored, and the network ports and electrical outlets can be power-cycled via the control system. One 10-inch touch panel will be stored at the equipment rack, and one additional 10-inch touch panel will be strategically positioned for use within this room. The two touch panels will have all the same controls and capabilities, so that provides us redundancy should it be needed. As requested by county management, an app can be placed on any PC, iOS, or Android device for remote control. Up to six room preset configurations will be provided on a main screen for Abidex Easy Meeting Launch for different meeting setups. Pressed-on source code will be provided to Brunswick County IT in the event it is needed, which is important to us from a support perspective because currently, we don't have that with the existing control panel. We actually have to call for support to come in should changes be needed. Additional considerations were given, and they included the virtual meeting platforms. So the proposed solution handles any of the various, what we call soft codec solutions, which would be Teams or Zoom, WebEx, Google Meetings, any of those are handled through this proposed solution. The system also has a recording and streaming engine. This appliance can record to an internal solid-state card drive, an external USB drive, or automatically pushed to a dedicated server or another location like the YouTube channel. A dual-network interface card will send information out to be recorded via one port while live streaming out the other. A wireless display capability is included and allows presenters to bring their own device and wirelessly project without connecting to our county network. So in the event that we might have outside agencies request to use the room, they would not have to tie into our network, but could bring their own device and use the wireless capability to project to the screen. Training will be provided to operational and maintenance staff, IT, as well as super-users of the system. Funding for the project will be covered mainly through ARPA-enabled funds, and $50,000 that came to the county a few years back from Focus was earmarked for the new AV solution in the chambers. So that has rolled forward for us a couple of times, and we're at the point that we're hoping to be able to spend it soon. Support is certainly an important part of the solution and is ongoing support. Abidex provides a comprehensive service, support, and managed services solution for this proposal. Their 360-degree service and support three-year advance plan includes 24/7 remote monitoring and help desk support. That 24/7 support will be proved beneficial to those meetings that are held after hours. Brunswick County will be guaranteed a two-hour priority call-response service level agreement. And should onsite support be needed, Abidex will deploy a support technician by next business day. With the advance plan, Abidex will perform one annual preventive maintenance on the integrated audiovisual system, which includes system check, cleaning, and optimizing all appropriate equipment. Through the remote monitoring, Abidex will assess the overall health of the system as well as device firmware versions and hardware status to allow for updates as needed. With this level of support and service, we'll experience optimal performance and extended lifespan of the solution. Takes us to the end. I thank you for your time and consideration. Again, we're confident that the proposed solution and vendor are reliable, top-notch, meet the requirements of the RFP, and will serve the county for many years to come. What questions do you have?
I got them.
I know, and I hope you're ready to help.
Great. I was not on, but I was looking at what was going on, what did we got? And we proposed, I'm not making wrong, Steve, about $25,000 spent for this factory, I don't know, maybe it was building, you know. Basically, studio launch, there's a general X. You don't need to put that kind of stuff in here, and they did. So somebody really, really got a good deal on the end of the corporation that did this. So I'm just saying, I don't think that's the case here. You guys are really doing a good job. And the other thing about it is I have four quarters, one speakers. How are you doing speakers? So that, or is it gonna be kind of like a, kind of like a theater type where you've got spaced out for that entire thing, so one level works up the entire thing? So, you know, having mains here and then just trying to drive it out? Or you're gonna have it spread throughout the room, or just one level up in obvious perspective?
So the speakers will be in zones. Any of you guys want to take that?
Yeah, I think it's kind of option two. Throughout the entire room? Yeah. Possibly should have had that microphone. Well, maybe it is kind of like when going to a theater, it's the same level throughout the entire room because it got the same.
Also, just, I'm sorry, sir, just to tack on to that, but also, one of the zones will be out in the vestibule. So if it's not needed, it won't be on.
A real problem we had early on was, and it's pretty much forgotten now because it's just been etched in stone, but we, they were, we used this room and then tried from that podium. And the XLRs on there are so tight, you can't even hardly move it. And so are we, now that we're gonna be doing a full makeover, will we either have it, I don't know, the wireless one has set up. We take that podium and turn it around, and we set this room up a different way? And then we should do the presentation, first attempt, maybe presentation, is that something that's gonna be back?
So we have had conversations with the vendor tomorrow about the podium. Are you saying yes or no?
Well, regarding that concern, the digital presentation. With that, it would just be.
Right, there's no give.
The next one is this remote viewing through the touch panel. Would you have ability that is, for some reason, whatever, we could have to show a plan?
Yes, sir.
Good. And the existing equipment that we have in here, I don't remember these things around. The point being is, they probably can be used somewhere. Are we gonna incorporate that into some other application here in the county?
We can look at that. We haven't explored that option. We just know that in here, we need to replace it, so.
Yeah, but this stuff still looks viable. So I'm just like, take it, put it in the conference room, put it in some place. I'm just setting, setting four, we'll try to make that work. And I'm glad you are, and so maybe that could be this is the greatest for us to have.
We can look at that.
That's my point, and I'm done. Bye.
Thank you.
One question. You mentioned some of the things that could be automated. For example, if somebody starts speaking, will the camera zoom in on their microphones? How much hands-on would this require during a meeting from someone, and who will be doing that?
So in the Board of Commissioners meeting, as we do currently, we'll have an IT staff present. But we'll have the, what Abidex refers to as their easy meeting setup. So we'll have different meetings preconfigured, and literally with the touch of a button or the touch of the screen is what it will mount to. The room will be configured as they need it to be. So we have six of those options. We know we've got the commissioners. We know we have the planning board, and then we'll work with others that use the room as well.
And you sort of halfway answered my next question, which was how would we train and educate those other boards on how to use the new system?
So when.
Make sure they don't break it.
Absolutely. So with the package, training is included, and that will be for, of course, the IT staff and those folks that we would consider to be super-users. So for those departments that have meetings that are scheduled in this room, then we would reach out to them and say, who are your super-users, and bring them training.
I guess, is there a way to prevent someone who hasn't been trained from trying to access it?
I think that's something we're gonna have to address as we move forward. I know we can work with the clerk to find out who's in there. Not to put you on the spot there, we apologize, but we can work with her to find out who is scheduled for the room and if we need to train someone, so.
You know, if we're gonna invest that much money, we don't need somebody coming in here and tearing it up three days in.
I agree with you. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I had made the motion on the wheels next October to start.
I know, I had made the motion on the rules next October to start. Mobile teleconference in our, all of our meetings. And this has been a long time coming. And I, I am thrilled that we're at this point, and I can't wait to see it up and run. The chairman of the county, I'll make the motion to approve.
Let me roll the perfect commissioner code. And I remember when we said this, we said, we don't want to just set up a webcam and have people online can't hear. We're gonna do it, people need to be able to hear what we're doing and see what we're doing. Now, I've been on other boards where no one can hear anything that's going on, even though they're technically broadcasting, getting us a bunch of static and background. So we're just gonna make sure that people can hear and know.
Right, so yeah, thanks for approval and a second to all in favor.
Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, so we're finally getting to the administrative. It looks like administration, these are, they're expanding and.
Yes, sir.
Yes, Chairman, yeah, I'll be glad to work with you guys through this request today. We're actually looking for feedback from the board related to a somewhat technical item, so I'll do my very best to outline this. Well, Brunswick County is a member of the Grand Strand Transportation Study Organization. Which is our urban regional transportation planning organization for the southern end of the county. GSAT is what I refer to them with the rest of the presentation, with GSAT. As part of their own obligations and responsibilities are required after each census to look at. Expected population growth around, you know, surrounding, rather organizational study area layout by today. So they're forecasting the looking ahead at areas within the southern portion of the county. They expect to urbanize between now and the next census. With that, they have the opportunity to grow their study boundary area. Which allows them to provide transportation planning services to those areas. Those areas that are currently occupied in the GSAT's area in the southern portion of the county. County currently receive transportation planning services from the Cape Fear Co. Through our rural planning organizations, so the RPM. So we use those phrases, GSAT and RPM several different times. So we have actually three different transportation planning organizations that provide services in Brunswick County. Southern side, we have GSAT, the rural area of the county, we have the RPM. And then on the northern end of the county, in the Leland, the Bassett, the Beldel area, we have the Longington Metropolitan Planning Organization, or WMU. And so we're talking about the southern end of the county in this particular instance. But GSAT, over the last several months, had initiated a plan to propose certain growth areas. That they feel like will urbanize the southern part of the county. Through this process, they identified and labeled four unique areas. And they labeled it A, B, C, and D. Areas C and D were specifically located in municipalities of Holyoke Springs Lake, Oak Island, Southport, and Casper Beach. We are not talking about those particular areas at this time, although I did provide a little bit of information in the packet for you. Those areas, GSAT's reached out to those municipalities and their elected bodies. And their elected bodies ultimately decided to not move forward with being incorporated into the GSAT's study area. And so we're focusing tonight on areas A and B. Areas that A and B are specifically located in the unincorporated areas of Brunswick County. The map that is on the screen now is the area B, which is outlined in red. Excuse me, green, I'm sorry, outlining in writing, was the initial area B. They also went back and looked at additional development approvals that have occurred in the county. And they've expanded that area into the red line. So you can see that red line basically abuts. All the way up to Oak Island on the, on the eastern mid area and moves north to Highway seventeen. I will say too that one thing that we've noted with this is that GSAT's has not reached out to the town of Bolivia yet. So under this proposal, Bolivia would be included, but they would need to reach out and seek approval from Bolivia. Prior to incorporating them into the study area. So along the way, there have been some, some concerns and some understanding from our staff standpoint, from GSAT's standpoint. On where these boundary expansion areas take place and what are the impacts to both the municipalities and to the county. This generally outlines their proposal for area B. We'll go to the next map and we'll try to outline.
So B is the green, then the red was just the, B the green border or red?
B is the green border, and then the red border was recently added to that as a potential expansion.
That's a big plus.
Yep. So that's the, and then we'll look at the other area in the blue. So the area in the blue line is, let's see, can you go to the next map there for me? And, I'm sorry, I don't control it. Area A is going to be the area north of Highway seventeen, but here it is perfectly, thank you again. Outlined in red there, so that's going to be an area north of Highway seventeen. It moves up to the Ash area and goes west to the South Carolina line. This would be the general area. There's not a lot of development currently at this time. In this particular area, but it is the area where the Carolina-based Parkway is expected to eventually be located. And with that, obviously, it will trigger some development in that area. So what I'm here tonight to ask you for is guidance on whether or not the county feels like. We should allow GSAT's to expand their transportation study area to areas A and B. So, early on in the conversations with GSAT, GSAT's had communicated that with this expansion could come. Potential new monies, additional monies to the county for transportation planning. We have since learned that that is not going to be the case. The transportation funding through GSAT will remain the same. So they are potentially expanding their boundary areas and not bringing in any additional funding. So it could potentially, who knows how the prioritization would work in the projects within the area. But there's the opportunity for fewer funds to go around to the areas that are in GSAT. We have to look at the impact to the RPM, who currently provides transportation planning services to this area. Right now, there wouldn't be any negative or positive impact to the RPM for this expansion from a funding perspective. It would just essentially take away their ability to provide transportation services from them. And transfer that responsibility to GSAT. And saying that, a reduction in the population for the RPM could have long term impacts to them from a funding perspective. As the area in the RPM grows in population. So it's again, very technical, very confusing, and I'll be glad to dive deeply into that if needed. But long story short, the impact is not positive from a financial perspective for GSAT. And it's neither positive nor negative today for the RPM. So from a purely technical planning perspective as well, staff has had some concern. Brunswick County staff has had some concerns with allowing the GSAT's boundary to expand. Simply because of some of the frustrations and issues that we have had with some of the local transportation projects that the county is operating. And that's not to say that we should not look at and allow GSAT's to expand their boundary areas, but we have had some challenges. GSAT's is an organization that is located privately in South Carolina. So their staff and their membership is very focused and very in-depth. Well aware of things and processes that happen in South Carolina, but are learning, if you will. Things that happen in North Carolina from a process and procedural standpoint. So again, there's some pros and cons for the consideration. Staff will support whatever board directs, you know, in terms of an outcome here, whether we support. Allowing GSAT's to expand into boundary A, B, both, or neither. Staff will certainly work with them accordingly. But I'll turn it over to you guys real quick for any questions that I hopefully can answer on this. But again, it is very technical. You can, you have the ability to decide to approve one, both, or neither. And what will come from the recommendation that you provide us today, we will take that information back to GSAT's, share that with them. And then GSAT's will have another opportunity for their TAC group to vote on whether or not they support these. Ultimately, that ends up in Raleigh with NCDOT. And NCDOT will set the final boundary for GSAT's for the next ten years.
And, and I think we have already forwarded something to, to Raleigh. Saying, hey, we want to study this more, how about consult us before you approve?
That is correct, because, and I'll make note too, that the recommendation from the board today, that doesn't necessarily mean that the TAC. Via GSAT's will approve what you guys recommend. But it's important for Raleigh, NCDOT, to understand collectively what the Board of Commissioners support in this particular situation. We do have two representatives from the board on GSAT's TAC Committee, and that's Chairman Thompson and Commissioner Sykes. Those individuals make up just two members of a much larger board. And so because of this particular growth of this boundary area, having impacts to the RPM. Which we have other representatives serving on the board, we thought it was important for the five of you to be given the opportunity. To consider these growth opportunities rather than putting that burden on Commissioner Sykes and Chairman Thompson.
And I appreciate you saying it. The, I can tell you, and I want to share this with the board, for, for discussions. This has been a very challenging. A very difficult process, primarily because. The, it has been for about a couple of times on GSAT's. And it went back to the Technical Review Committee, taken back again. Early on, earlier, it was expressed to GSAT's and the. Leadership for the planning department of GSAT's, which comes out of the Lockwood. A car. It was expressed to them that the information wasn't properly flown to county staff. Because county staff did not support this particular endeavor. And there, there's one more piece that, that's being left out, perhaps been mentioned. And that's the policy group out of South Carolina. We have three representatives from our camp on this policy group, which is myself. Mayor Shalane, Mayor Michelle Benge. We are dramatically outnumbered when it comes to decision-making. Just about every state legislature, legislator that is from that area, the Lockwood area. Serves on that along with the mayors or representative for every municipality. Within the already Georgetown, that, that whole thing. Insist on the lock. So you can imagine when we go into a meeting, that is the oversight group of GSAT's. Matter of fact, whenever we wrote our letter to, to, to the executive director of Lockwood. Co, asking for discussion or discussion at that place. We copied the chair, who is a House Representative for South Carolina. As one of the overseeing the policy group, so. My, my concerns that I had, my second concern that I had was the fact that. Before any of this came up for vote, the co leadership chose to go to a number of our municipalities. Share the information of what the, what GSAT's could do for them, and all of them turned it down. Everyone turned, turned it down. Then, next time we go to a meeting, these areas are shut. Without any discussion with the county, we're already, and we're already in discussion with county staff. And the information that we provide to county staff, because county staff is on that technical review. And so they expressed that, their, their challenges there with the expansion. And just like, well, it doesn't matter whatever it is for this, because we're outnumbered. The members of this particular group. You know, I thought at one time that section A might be good. Maybe we could get a little bit more pressure put in from getting the Carolina-based Parkway. But my, my feeling is, is that it goes right back to the policy group out of South Carolina. That gives them more discussion and more weigh in than it does to the folks in North Carolina. By, by putting that area in. So, so I'm, I'm kind of looking, and I know Commissioner Sykes has been in the same situation I'm in. There was a little bit of information we had in the county attorney to, to look at. A lot of the bylaws associated with, with GSAT's and with this process. And it was determined that there might have been a, a time that. Maybe the, the total process wasn't as understood as it should have been. By the leadership of GSAT's, which might have caused, well, the big violence we did, in my opinion. It was caused a breach between the county and a few municipalities. Within our county that they're, they're looking to advance the positive things that GSAT's might bring to the table. For some of these areas. And, and that, again, the, the, that, that's available with, with the. Cape Fear Co. And you have to remember that all of our municipalities that we're talking about here. Are members of the Cape Fear Co. They're, they're, they're all members, and they're all members of Cape Fear Co. So it's a, it's a little bit challenging and there's a whole lot of. It's a lot of new area for us to discuss. I can tell you that all of those that came up, that it has been mentioned. About expanding the area means that you're taking a pot of money that is without overplanning. And you're spreading that out to even additional areas. And there, there, there were those that voted not to do that. So they're going to lose those dollars to areas that are not currently within the boundaries today. So, so I share that with you and then if there's questions that I can answer.
Thank you for having that. I'll add to another thing that we need to consider. These transportation organization through project prioritization is important within NCDOT and how they prioritize projects. And based on prioritization leads to what projects get funded and which ones do not. One concern that staff shared is that by expanding the GSAT's boundary. RPM has heavily prioritized the two eleven improvements, Highway two eleven improvements. Whereas GSAT's is highly prioritized the Carolina-based Parkway, rightfully so in terms of their current boundaries. When you expand GSAT's boundaries to include all the way to Highway two eleven. There is some concern that some of the improvements that you would want to prioritize with two eleven may get lost in the shuffle of prioritization. Because of that boundary expansion and the number of points that GSAT's as a whole is allowed to apply to projects. So there's several different variables that we, we don't truly know the answer to. We can only speculate and maybe assume and project some of the potential outcomes. But from a staff's perspective, right now, we haven't seen a whole lot that would lead us to say, all right, there's, there's way more benefit here than there is negative. Right now, it's sort of a muddied unknown for us, and that's why we'll take any of your input that you guys provide to us. But there are some challenges out there that we forecast.
Yes.
And I'll share a few thoughts. As far as my perspective, I'm on both the MPO and also the RPM boards. So I'm Wellington MPO, not GSAT's. Obviously, they're two very different groups, and I've been chair of the RPM for longer than I want. Longer than I wanted to be chair, but no one else seems to want the job. But to me, first of all, I'm looking at the distinction of the two. An MPO, whether it's Wellington MPO or GSAT's, is an urban area transportation organization. A lot of this territory they're looking to take in is not urban. It's still very rural. So that's one point I would think. Secondly, and I understand that some of our towns that are members of GSAT's get a lot out of it. But towns and counties are not the same thing. We are very different forms of government. And one of the biggest things in North Carolina is that the town will do roads, counties cannot do roads. Those towns benefit because they can get some of that federal funding, and every minute that requires a local match. That would have to come from some, one of those entities. So I have no, no issue with the towns that want to be part of GSAT's because they can get that federal funding. Thirdly, I'll share is the Wellington MPO had a discussion about, do we want to go out, look at expansion? It was a long discussion, and what they ultimately decided was, we're not here, the MPO is not there for the sake of road. If one of those towns wants to be part of it, they can. If one of those towns wants to be part of it, they can. And we'll let them know that we'd be happy to talk to them. But it's up to them to show that they want to be part of it because it's not our job to go sell them on why they should be part of this organization. If they want to stay in the RPO, that's fine. If they want to be in the MPO, we'd have that conversation. So that's, I think that was a difference in mentality. You know, I would say that the RPO has done, and the MPO both do an excellent job of prioritization. And if you take out the federal funding, prioritization is the single most important thing you can do in these rural areas because that's how we, that's how we handle problems. The RPO staff understands that process because it can educate anybody as well about it. Wellington MPO staff can explain that. Candidly, I'm not sure that planners from across the state line can explain North Carolina's prioritization process, explain it effectively and know how it works because they work in a different state and come up here to handle some things. But they've got another state that they're based in. I could see rationale for the area A. And looking at these maps gives you a headache. I need that big screen that you were talking about to be able to see these because there's so much stuff jammed on it here. I can understand putting the Carolina Bay's Parkway possibly. But I certainly, you know, the sentiments you shared about the concerns about having GSAS come over into 211. You know, we just, we had a meeting, the RPO last week, and Miss March did a great job along with the RPO staff organizing that here at the complex. We had every municipality in the RPO area except for one change that participated and shared their feedback. And it was probably one of the best meetings we've had because we sat down and went through what those priorities were. And I think it worked very well. They seemed very happy to be there and they gave us feedback. And 211, once again, was our number one priority because we got it started with the easy finish for us. We had to break it up into multiple projects to even give it a chance to score. But do we don't have a map that overlays area A and area B so I can see how they compare to?
Yes.
I was, I thought that might have been one of these up here, but that.
I think it was the, that.
The landing is so small on my tablet, it's hard to tell. Need that.
Try the other.
We don't have one that overlays both of them. Apologize. But just to make sure I understand, area A is smaller than area B, correct?
Correct.
Does area A cover anything that's not also an area B?
No, they're completely.
Everything, but everything that's in area A would also be in area B. Is that correct?
No, they're separate. They are separate.
That's what I'm thinking.
But it did mention an area of B plus.
Correct.
But in B plus takes, it was bringing it just down to Stone Chimley. It brings it down, I think, and carrying it over the beach or down that way. But the latest, the B plus carried it all the way to Sunset Off Road.
All right. You know, 100% opposed to area A and 100% opposed, 100% opposed to B plus. The A is the, just not getting my number letter mixed up. The A is the red, is that correct? It is the one that's on the current.
You know, and whenever it originally was, whenever we originally talked about, GSAS, I got them to approve area A. And when, the, the problem was that that went back to the TCC. They came back and came up with this, with this modified B after that. What we're seeing, B called today was actually a modification of what a larger B was at one point.
Yeah, so we're on the screen now. We are agreeing with the original B. Their red line is now the current B plus that you're voting on. And that expanded because they got new development data. They included some subdivisions that had been recently approved in, around the, with the Atlantic Ocean Highway area specifically. So that allowed them to expand that boundary. And it's all projecting. They're, they're just simply using data, GIS data, development data to project where they expect areas to urbanize. Some of these may ultimately not urbanize, but the boundary expansion would still remain.
I think in an ideal world, we need to angle for Brunswick County to all be under one plan and organization after the next census is based in this county.
That is something that we had to talk with staff internally about as well is that, you know, once a municipality within a county reaches a population of 50,000, then the county can establish a county-wide MPO. It is likely that Leland, if they keep at their current pace, will probably, some of the annexation laws that they limit that. But if that gets worked out, Leland is obviously the best opportunity for us to reach the point to have a county-wide MPO. And if that is established, then these boundaries would actually still remain the same. GSAS and Wellington MPO on the north, those boundaries, whatever they are at that time, they have the ability to stay the same unless there was a relinquishment of those boundaries by that organization. But there's nothing that we could compel them to do that.
So if we agreed to any of these expansions, then they can hold on to whatever makes sense regardless of.
Potentially unless they want to.
You just decided my vote.
They could voluntarily give us, they could voluntarily give us those boundaries back that they could also maintain.
Nice to hear that. You just decided my vote.
Okay.
Yes, sir. I went to college in South Carolina. I got family that's on the county. And I don't go down there for anything. I don't shop there. I don't do anything. Well, this was a shot in the marriage. We had a gun drawn at you by the bomb administration. And they forced us to be in this GSAS thing. And I was the first representative home. And having dealt with people from Merle Beach at the time, said they just weren't for themselves. As far as they're concerned, they decided they were saying the earth is flat and fall off the face of the earth and be going more through water being by drags. The point being is this, you have to understand their intent is to be attracted to go into their jurisdiction. They want to control them. And starting with evidence by what Chairman Thompson just stated, they've got a controlling interest. And as you stated, they may or may not give it back to us. Our emphasis has been to 11. And I know that in 2000, I was speaking down at Midway Road and they were looking to survey that for my until 2003. It's been some 20 years. We have had, as, as Commissioner Williams just stated, we've had to do it piecemeal. He did all the things DOT and state wanted us to do and they throw it back at us and say, we don't have a plan. So we had to break it up. We need that as a priority, is that 211. That needs to be done. And I really don't appreciate, in fact, being controlled by some interest outside of our state that doesn't understand how highways and taxes or how any of this is being done. Now, I understand that even though it was a shot in the marriage initially, I know the beaches have benefited from it and they like it. I get that and I think that's fine. If that works out, I've got a good relationship with them. But I have to go back to where I am, which is, but I'm the only person on this board that's on MPO or RPO to GSAS. But I am going with Cod and I'm big on water. That being said, I think we need to make our determinations, not have people out of Georgetown County, not have people out of Orange County trying to make those determinations for us in full weather that they're looking at to subjugate whatever's going on here. But that being said, I am vehemently opposed to expansion. I don't mind keeping it where it is, but I'm opposed to this.
And I need to say one thing too, quite quick. I need to go on record. This, this morning, I spoke with the Executive Director for the Wakefield, Lockwood College, Ms. Smith. She expressed that she most support Brunswick County. And I would say that when we brought this issue down to her, that we were having difficulty with staff and communicating our position with staff. She has done just about everything she could do from a professional standpoint to approach this situation, trying to find a solution. And so I want to, I do want to say that, that whatever we decide, send that information forward. And I would say that whatever we decide, it's going to be put in some type of letter to go back to her and to the GSAS.
Yes, whatever, whatever recommendation is made today, we will provide that to the TAC Committee within GSAS and we'll also provide the Executive Director a copy of that.
Because I, I think what GSAS is playing with is calling and meeting. They, my opinion, they postponed their last meeting. So scheduling a meeting to, it was to address just this, but seeing how it postponed the meeting today, I would say the problem is just beyond the general and everything else. But the, but I do, I do want to make sure that, I believe that moving forward, that we will see a difference in the way in which Brunswick County is pursued by staff and by the officers in Lockwood Cod. And I'm pretty, like I said, she, she, she really desires to build a consensus in including Brunswick County. So whatever we come up with, it's noted, we're still under the current situation. Still going to have to work out good solutions. And in our team, just like what y'all said about our municipalities, our municipalities have, many of them have received assistance through GSAS and are very pleased. They're not looking to change that. So I think down the road, there's going to start to be a oppositions that have to make changes to that. And in saying that, as a recommendation.
Okay. I have a question for you. Frankly, you brought the point that you're a minority on the board.
Yes.
Kind of, I am MPO, so I can understand that. To 12 members of the board, we got four votes. So, you know, we're the minority. Although we've learned to work very well together and sort of got quite fit. And GSAS expanding is just diluting the same drama. I mean, if I had $100 and I had to feed four people, now they're saying, oh, we still have $100, but we're going to feed seven people. See, you're just diluting the dollars. You haven't accomplished anything. But they were getting more money out of something, I might say, okay. But trying to go on the RPO with what tooth in hand, and we got $227 million for the widening of 211 that's going on right now. As he gets closer to the end, we're going to fight for phase two. And we will eventually get 211, you know, we'll all be here, we know. But we're going to continue to fight to get the 211 expansion done. GSAS is an urban transportation organization. When that, all Brunswick County is a world. The RPO understands this. We understand our prioritization. We understand how to do, what roads are most important, us assign all points. I don't believe South Carolina has any idea how to assign points. I just don't see. And something that's really telling to me, GSAS went to what, four different, four, maybe five different municipalities and asked them to voluntarily, and then I think it's been a piece of that. Every single town said no. Every single one, that's telling. You know, see, if it was more, you had 20 board members that looked at this and said, man, this doesn't benefit us in any way. The RPO is doing a better job of us. And obviously, there's a prejudice because we're all on the RPO. So of course, there's a little bit of prejudice towards that. But I, I'm not in favor of this in any great shape or form based on what Ains just said. If we got our own MPO, they can hold back all that area. So we can never get it. That's silliness to me.
Giving away.
Yeah, we're giving away, between the MPO and GSAS, we're giving away, you know, half of our county. We have no control.
It's, it's fine for the beaches, they like it and that's fine.
Okay, they can get in the traffic light or stop somewhere bad.
Well, it helps them. It helps them a lot. That, that does come in there, it does help a lot. But this is not, that, I mean, just say, this dollar's turned it down. And we have different priorities in our county. The other, but not for me.
Well, we, in our letter, depending upon what the decision is there, I don't remember what it's for, but in our letter, we need to say very clearly, these two areas are not being, they're not losing out on planning. We need, we need to make sure that that is expressed in our letter, that the 211 corridor, the area that was in area A, that the planning needs for transportation are being addressed, met in those areas. So that, so that whenever the, whenever we get in our next meeting, you know, I've got different communities sitting in there that belong to 11 that live in the, in the Hickman Road area, all out of that, that, what they call an ash or period. You know, they know that they're not missing accounts. I think that's going to, I think that's going to be an important piece of this with the community that tells them that they're still getting, they're still receiving proper planning for transportation in those areas just because we're saying, hey, you know, you, there's more to this than just what you're getting, what you're not getting. There, it's, it's, it's a much larger issue than we can do. But the, but they're not losing. So I think that's going to be a real key for, for the citizens that live in those areas. Because again, I would tell you, in Southern Brunswick County, transportation is the number one issue. Certainly, we can talk about birth all night long and tree cutting and everything else. They have to ignore those roads to go by where that's pretty simple. We can understand whatever, whatever traffic, it's the way it is. And I understand that. And eventually, we're all going to have to come together to address this traffic concern.
Well, it's not just us. I mean, it's, I would say, but that's what I was going, it's probably just one.
Yeah, it's a very good time. It's red blocking hot now and we've got, and then you can come up with good ideas to address it. But, but I guess that's where I want to make sure that whenever we send back a reason why, we want to make sure that more of our reasons is, well, you're, we don't want your plan. The fact is, is that they do have one.
If you need information on the RPO, reach out to myself or Michael. Hell, we can get you something sent.
Okay, so is there a motion?
Do we need a motion or do you need?
Or do you need a direction? Well, I don't like the motion or direction on whether we oppose or agree to areas A and B.
I make a motion that we not support any of the both options.
A second. But a motion is second. Any further discussion? I want to put it right.
Aye.
Yeah. And I just, and if you were sure that no one of this particular one, that Ms. Sykes, it is asked. All right, so the next thing out is transfer a property through Brunswick County Department of Defense.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The county owns about 257 acres split into two adjacent parcels to the north and west side of County CNA land bill. That property was acquired back in 2010 when the county had intent of expanding this CNA land bill. Ultimately, because of some litigation and because it was determined it really wasn't going to be cost effective for the county to expand the landfill, that project was abandoned. The county does not have any other planned use for the property. And in fact, in 2014, the then Board of Commissioners passed a resolution committing the northern parcel, the one that's immediately adjacent to the middle of the road, saying that it could be accessible to Brunswick County schools for a school site. Their school planning has changed somewhat in the last 10 years. And they might want to put two schools in that different area and/or possibly some administrative offices. We still don't really have an other use for the high end. So we want you to consider whether. consider, uh, whether, uh, we could commit to those parcels to the school system and I'll say that we don't, we, we don't have to have formal action denying one way or the other, but we make sure they're all aware and thinking about it. And one reason it's very pertinent to the Board of Education right now is, uh, they've been negotiating for the property in the northern part of the county where we really don't own anything that, that we could share or transfer to them, uh, analyzing. If they leave that they were not gonna have to have a major outlay for laying in for schools in the central part of the county, uh, that they would be more comfortable with doing the things they have to do for the northern.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may ask Mr. Attorney, is there any reason why I need to recuse myself because of my ownership of the member of the Board of Education in the Maryland State?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, that, if it's benign or pervert, I'd like to approve almost.
I have one question though.
Yeah.
Just thinking out loud, should we make it contention upon them using it for school-related use and not selling it? Not that they would do that, but I don't know who's gonna fill that board in four years.
I believe we can, we can put that sort of restriction on it.
Might include this. I'll say that with that.
Did you know, when we were in the meeting with that age, they want to put a elementary and high school on there.
Plans change.
Yeah.
And people.
That's correct.
I'll say that with that contingency.
All right, so now a motion and a second, any of you can. All in favor of that?
I.
Very good.
I'm assuming the attorney will work out the paperwork to make sure that it reflects that.
Sir.
All right, so, now, we have some, we have some board appointments.
Yes, sir. So, first, the two three one, correct, does your team have a kind of board utilization review, protect your, your packets for the party? Mr. Cook.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to approve regarding that and, uh, Mr. Perle Bell's certification for a long time, actually, if he would date me, and, uh, so that being said, I, I would say that he would be an outstanding, uh, person for certain, that passes out like.
Yes, Mr. Harrow.
Yes.
All right, so, motion and a second, all in favor of that?
I.
Very good.
Okay, next one will be the, approve the appointment of Jennifer Fairlot to the Brunswick, as the Brunswick County Board of Education appointee to the substantiation of mental health condition.
I will make a multiple part motion. Part one is to approve Jennifer Fairlot as the Board of Education member. Part two is to appoint Cecilia Pierce as the Trillium representative. And then part three is to table the appointment with the mental health provider representing to be permitted.
All right, uh, you have a second.
I would go with that.
All right, all in favor of that?
I.
All right. Now, front.
You want to put it on the next board reading then, on the white sheet?
Sure, we can always, we're not ready, we can always say you'll be in line to be ready.
Good. Uh, all right, so we've got, going to go closer.
Yes, sir. I'm getting a motion to enter and starting to set I do one.
Before we do that, on the other business, I have one item that needs to be addressed.
Okay.
Our annual convention conference starts tomorrow. I have, I begged out because of the storm and our lawyers begged out Commissioner Sykes, Steve Stone, David, we know, and it means I won't beg out.
And I think I'm headed in that direction.
Well, I am the voting member for the conference. I would like to, if that, if you're gonna most likely beg out, I don't claim the storm because he has a business he has to do up there. I would like to relinquish my voting privilege and in turn, I'm gonna try to be the voting member for the sheer soundless.
You're good with that. Uh, so, a second.
Uh, it's easy focus, it took a whole hook.
Yeah, I love it. You have a second, all in favor of that?
I.
Very good.
Thank you.
And if the clerk can send something to the N C A C C reflecting that, just so that they know that I'm legit.
And, uh, Kelly Brown, second, and Kelly Brown, if there may be a change, I hope that we'll follow that up.
Please, please, we better ask her, you know.
I think they understand. I communicated with them, but I wasn't sure what I was gonna do, but we're gonna get out early and plan the state later if we have to.
With the walk being postponed, you can go ahead and talk to the council.
Sir.
Go ahead.
One other quick item of other business, not something we have to take action on today, but I know we've discussed in various points how we approve, uh, how we identify and select engineers and the process we score that by. I'd love for us to take a more deep dive look at how we do it, maybe have a fellow commissioner or a committee to look into that specifically. I'd like to recommend Mr. Forte and Commissioner Sykes to be on that committee. Mr. Sykes has agreed to serve if we could do that. Again, no specific timeline and just to review and look at the scoring and the criteria and how we do that.
And that's on every engineer?
That's more utilities and things like that, except for a lot of things.
Why don't we include, well, why don't we include all of it? Be easier, don't want to be anything.
That's fine.
I, I've had issues with the way we've done it in the past anyways.
So, so can, uh, now that you, maybe this needs to just be a, uh, an instruction for staff and you can come, you can pre any of this little model, maybe, and then come back to us and tell us exactly what your scope will be, uh, what you, you've identified two numbers already, so, uh, and then wherever we need, yes, if you come back to maybe our next meeting.
Or meeting after, like getting after them any more, not, I don't want to be a time sensitive thing.
I'm just thinking of meeting at, late again, where do we go? We don't have any one meetings?
No, we have two meetings, the later day, which the next day, which is, uh, not Tuesday, just like we, we're starting with the same meeting. Hopefully not in each row.
We did. All right, so, go ahead now.
Okay, thank you. We can get a motion to enter and close session for someone in C K R statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight, three, consulting attorney.
So, second.
So, you have a second, all in favor of that?
I.
Very good.
What's on your, for your?
I just, I, all in favor of that?
I.
Good.
Good.